Alrighty.
Thank you.
There we go. Make sure this doesn't fall over. We need to roll this start sliding, please stop it. Is it St. Patty's Day?
Two days it will be.
Two days, nice.
You're gonna have to put that on again. I like it.
You got it? It's the perfect suit for St. Patty's Day.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna ask one of you to do that. I tried before, I'm just not quite solid enough.
Solid enough, I can't read my arm off.
Yes, thank you. It is on my... Yep, under my other reports. Thank you for reminding.
And this is the addition.
Did mommy help you out?
Do you guys all have your...
I could ask you the same thing.
Didn't recognize you with your mask on.
I did.
I think it says that message. It went into your mailboxes back in February.
I recognized you.
They should've gave it away.
I just have your packet there.
Thank you. How's everybody?
Good.
Good job. Hope they're more aware of something, hopefully. Hopefully.
Oh, okay.
Then get back to me and I'll call them in.
Oh, okay.
Do things that call them and say that, because I short $200 versus giving them the corporate.
Yeah, okay.
Can I call this being the orders, some of the budget leaders?
Budget leaders in five, United States of America, and two Republicans who stand on nation and God in the bill. Who are delivering justice for all.
Opening the meeting to the public, does anyone have anything they'd like to say right now?
Hello, good day, Ray Wayman, I'm Priscilla Lane. I just have a concern about the development of the property here in Rouse's Point, and our reaction or interaction with ERS. I watched the meeting that we had on Thursday night on the 4th. And from what I saw, any outsider looking in would think it was the Spanish Inquisition. You know, the guys were sitting at the table and they were just grilled with this question. Do you have your permits? And did you do this? How come you don't talk to us? You know, it's like a kid being scolded. And I just thought it was a real adversarial meeting instead of, hey, what can we do to help you bring businesses to the village? You know, so I don't think we should have that. You wanna talk about communication, what have you done to reach out to them to communicate to them? I don't know. You have to answer that question yourself. But I think we need to have a better relationship with them. And I also think we need to have a better relationship with the board members and the mayor. It seems like there's public comments about you guys going at each other. And these are public, you know, that happens in the meetings, those kinds of things. We can't have that. Whether you don't like the mayor or another board member, doesn't matter. You gotta be professional all the time. You can never lose your professionalism, ever. Because you represent the village to the outside world. Anybody can find Rouse's Point website, Facebook, look at them and say, I'm not going there. So, please try and get along with each other, keep everything professional all the time, no matter what the circumstances is, and keep your grievances behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Reed, from Rose Avenue. Just, I wanna comment on some recent events that emerged online by village officials. I feel it needs to be said that your marks are damaging to the community. Each board member actively decided to run for office. You must present yourselves for the best interest of this village in mind. That means it's okay to disagree. You can ask questions, you can research options. It's not okay to use modern technologies to bully, to complain, to order to shame other board members. In these instances, think about the endgame, the prospering village. Take a step back, return to good old discourse, in person and not online. By doing this, you'll save the village the embarrassment of hearing that another business has passed us by from the online drama that unfolds. It is not okay to do this. It's fine, I've been on a board where we didn't like each other, but you don't need to do it out online. Talk to one another. You can get through because you all have the same endgame. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Any questions on the minutes of the previous meeting? Make a motion to adjutant, first.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We've got the minutes of the special meeting as well today. And the budget meeting, yes. Any questions about the special meeting? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you do it for both the budget and the special. Treasurer of the turnovers, are there any additions or releases for bills?
We have one addition this evening, it's the business cards, the credit card. It's for the Zoom software purchase for $149.90.
Make a motion to be amended.
Do you guys have any questions first?
I didn't hear who seconded.
Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence today, Mr.?
No, there isn't.
Okay, so we've got resolution 2021-8, close out Rouse's Point Revitalization Grant for the Pacific Center here. The board trustees have determined the village no longer needs the Rouse's Point Revitalization Capital Project Fund because the capital project is completed, all funding has been received. And whereas treasurer has submitted a complete accounting of the project's revenues and expenditures showing a balance of 410.57 in the fund, therefore we resolve the board trustees hereby declare the project completion and authorize treasurer to close Rouse's Point Revitalization. Capital Project Fund transfer the balance of 410.57 back to the general fund to zero out the project's balance. This resolution shall take effect immediately, the question of the foregone is duly booked, roll call, vote. Make a motion for roll call, vote on this matter.
I'll second it.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dale?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye, Gadway and Abson. We also have the Public Emergency Plan for the village.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, could we back up for a moment? We added to the agenda, resolution 2021-09?
Oh, that's not in there.
It should be in your packets. Last page of your packet?
It's right there.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas the board trustees deemed it advisable to make certain modifications to the 2021 village budget, be hereby resolved that the treasurer is authorized and directed to make all the modifications to the village's budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Everybody good with this? This resolution shall take effect immediately, the question of foregone is duly booked, roll called, vote.
I'll second it.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, Gadway and Abson. Now the Public Emergency Plan. This plan is presented to the board in case as a requirement because of COVID. Do you have any questions on, any comments on this?
Just that it has been required from New York State. It went into your mailboxes February 1st and also went to the union by February 4th as required. I did not get any comments back from the union. So at this point, it has to be approved by this board by April 1st. This being our last regular meeting before April 1st. I'd like to have either approval or if it needs to have any modifications. It was done using a template from Nikon.
I have read through this at the various different stages it was done. And I've got no concerns with it, looks like a good plan.
I also read through it and it seems like we pretty much followed all the rules that were, you know, kind of took through this one, COVID did break out.
Will this also be applicable for any future pandemics?
It is pretty much for future pandemics because everybody scrambled over COVID and then there were piecemeal regulations and executive orders that went into place that were sometimes difficult to implement because we didn't have time behind it. So this is really going to hold out into the future if there are any future pandemics or other emergencies, not just pandemic, how we would continue to work.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this plan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't really have any news in truck replacements at this time. There was, I wanted to talk about updating the code book. Most of it is going to be tabled for the comprehensive plan because I've learned that the code book should be updated as part of the comprehensive plan itself. There are still a few things I would like to update in the code book, just to clear up some confusions. Because part of the code book refers to positions like the superintendent, but there is no village superintendent anymore. So I'd like to change the language where superintendent to the head of the department that is responsible for that particular part. It's like you had a public works, had supervisor. No, just the head of the department. Because that way, in case the supervisor's out sick or has an emergency or was just on vacation, it's in the code that it would fall to the first number, the supervisor, if that position is fallen. But that way, in the future, if another position is removed or added, if we have another superintendent, and that superintendent is then in charge of that department, it would go up to that person too. Is there anything you'd like to say with that?
Yeah, Matt, I don't know where the village stands with this comprehensive plan, but certainly that I agree that I think once we get that back or you have a chance to look at that and read the comments of the public with respect to that, that would be the time to make some little changes. Because coupled with that, you may see that you wanna make some changes in the zoning ordinance as well. Maybe certain areas are changing or can be modified somewhat or whatever. So we get a lot of feedback in that comprehensive plan regarding zoning in particular, I think. But also perhaps some planning issues and some other things, so. Certainly, that's really the time when you make those changes, when you get that comprehensive plan. Because I would assume the last time the village had a comprehensive plan done was probably quite some time ago. So I think it is probably time to have that done. And that's something that is good to do, I don't know, maybe 20 or 30 years or nothing, maybe more often, just to see kind of where things stand, how things are developing, how areas are changing. So, I agree, I think once we get the comprehensive plan, that would be the time to make a lot of these other changes, whether it be grammatical or whatever the case may be.
Who's working on that plan?
I don't.
Barton Le Judas is working with the zoning committee.
That's something we should talk about too, because the planning board is doing that. And again, I haven't been involved in it at all, but I didn't know whether, I didn't know who was doing it. So I'm glad to hear something's happening. The other thing you could do is actually, whether the village wants to do that, we can hire outside consultants to help work on that as well. Because there are some very specific requirements have to be followed with that regarding public input and things like that as time goes on. I think.
Tom, we've had our first meeting today with a consultant from Barton and Le Judas about the steps to do, the first steps for the comprehensive plan. We're gonna have some issues with funding because we, that line in the budget got used towards the parks grant, so we had less money than we thought. And we're not exactly flush in our next budget. So we're going to do what we can to get the, at least to the survey, the first survey of the village. We have a committee that's gonna do what they can on it. And then we're gonna look for some grants possibly to get the major bulk of the comprehensive plan written.
Okay, and it is generally, generally speaking, something that takes a little bit of time usually. It's not something that you can say you can accomplish like in six months or whatever, so that's probably fine. But if Susan McBeath just kept advising us, we're gonna actually look at some of that stuff as well. But, I mean, not doing a lot of zoning thing going on in the village or in planning, but I would like to use some of that stuff and see what they're proposing. Please make some comments or see if, I think there's some things that maybe I've seen over the years that we may wanna modify on as well.
So they make the plan and then they present it to the board, or how does this work? I would actually like to have Benny help with the plans and zoning planning.
To answer your question, Brian, yeah, they come up with certain proposals. In looking at the village, there's usually a survey done. Actually, there's usually a survey that's sent out to all the residents in the village to see, get their kind of comments or input as well, to see, okay, what do they, what do they see as things that the board may want to address as part of a comprehensive plan? You know, and again, you know, the village, the board, the committee would look at, okay, let's look at the village as a whole, how are certain areas that maybe are residential now, but are they getting to be more commercial? Do we need to modify the zoning district in that area? Are there some other areas that maybe are commercial but maybe more suited for resident? I mean, it's looking at the overall plan in the village to see, okay, this is maybe the last time it was done, this is what was in place, but where are areas that are districts or whatever that seem to be changing or could change that would be more beneficial to the village?
So this is more of a planning and zoning issue and code? Codes?
It's certainly a large part of that, yes. Yeah.
The final plan will appear to the board.
It as well and things of that nature.
I know we take that pot's property down there that we developed this and stuff, and we're, why a property or?
You look at, you look at general areas in the village, you see how things are zoned, what kind of restrictions are in those areas, and, you know, how things might be able to be changed that would be more beneficial for the village, its residents, you know, businesses, et cetera. So a lot of it, yes, has to do with zoning, planning, development, things of that nature.
I know we talked about it in our budget meeting, you know, budget money, but we really didn't know who was doing it or where they're at.
The last, I mean, the town of Flashburg has done a number of comprehensive plans, I'm gonna say in the last 20 years, I'm gonna say three or four at least. Peru did one in the last five years. They may be the last, you know, probably, I'm gonna say town in Clinton County that may have done one that I'm aware of. I know all the towns have been talking about it, even the towns have been talking about it. And some other municipalities have been talking about it, but Peru may have been the last one. But even theirs took like well over a year, because again, they had a number of meetings. They had a number of public meetings where they got input from the community. They would send out surveys to the residents to say, okay, what do you see as important issues with respect to the village? You know, and they could put things like, well, we could take some chops, we could take some attracting business. They could take, you know, maybe developing more public space, maybe whether it's parks or this or that. And you take that input as part of the plan and say, okay, this is basically what a lot of people are thinking about. Let's try to put this together with the concerns of the community and really what's in the best interest of the village to kind of develop some of these ideas.
Well, didn't Melissa McManus do this 20-some years ago?
She may have, yeah, she may have done one about that time. I was gonna say, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's like 25 years, yeah.
Yeah, that would sound about right.
Yeah, the revitalization of downtown section and stuff like that.
Early to mid 90s.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and, you know, it is certainly something that should be revisited from time to time. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying either have to go five years or 10 years on that, but from time to time because areas change. You know, the public interest changes to some extent, what's more important, you know, from time to time. So it is certainly a good idea, and the fact that, you know, the village is looking into it, I certainly think it's a very good idea. So, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh. That's weird. A little clarification, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't mean to, we wanna, I tell about it, but yeah, well, I do create it.
Yeah, the board, the Planning and Zoning Board has asked, who I thought would be as a good board representative of us, recommend that Danny to work with the Planning and Zoning Board when they've got questions. Because of your knowledge of the village's history and our business.
No planning board anymore.
And this will allow, like, any outside developer, give them an idea of what we're kind of looking for for, where we want development, the types of jobs we're looking for. And it gives, it gives the Planning and Zoning Board a lot more, a much better footing when they're putting projects and disagreeing with projects.
Yeah, having an updated comprehensive plan is actually important for zoning and planning just in case any of the zoning or planning regulations or ordinances ever challenge. You can say, well, you know, we've kind of gone through this comprehensive plan, it's a lot beneficial for a number of reasons.
And for the titles in the code, like superintendent, I'd like to find a way to update them a little later because I have had to field several phone calls and send several emails out clarifying. Because they're like, we're looking for the superintendent that we contacted for this thing, but you have no superintendent position, so I've gotta send out an email or a phone call to clarify who they contacted for approval for something. And I would like it to make it much, change the title so it's a lot clearer, so that they know what department they contacted.
It sort of makes sense.
Okay, I've got some COVID aid bill news as well. So all of this is still in flux, we have an idea of what we're supposed to get, but it's not set in stone yet. At least it's better than nothing, though, so. Request an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular employee. Request an exec, wait.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Request an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular employee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Trustee Arnold?
Nothing on fire department, I talked to Mike tonight, everything's going well at the fire department. I got a quote on cleaning the carpet here from Hamilton Brothers for $200 if the board wants to go along with it. I think we should drive it, rather than drive it off.
So we get some of these things?
Minimal, minimal now, instead of replacing the carpet at this time.
Yeah. So anyhow, they contacted them after the board meeting the other, last week and stuff. They said they come down, took a look at it, said they do it for $200, so. Alrighty, I'll give this to Susan and she can contact them and so.
Should we make a motion?
Yeah. I would think so, spending $200.
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, if you're, Trustee Menard, you have anything today?
I'm not, no, sorry. I talked to Ethan tonight and we have a problem out here with this little door where all the hockey players come in. Two weeks ago, couldn't even use the door, but the door wouldn't open up to frost, heat the tarmac up. So I'd like to see Adam, and this summer when we do the sock out a little bit more and go into the door with the snat instead of the tarmac. I talked to Mr. Menard later on that. It's okay to do that.
Yeah, I'll look up everything right here.
Yeah.
A little equipment here.
Yeah.
Do we already have all the concrete for the sidewalk and stuff, or?
Well, we were talking about putting the sidewalk out from this door out to.
All the way up to the parking lot.
All the way out to the parking lot, so it's another six feet, eight feet or so. So it's another six feet, eight feet or so. Because if you leave that tarmac there, or if you re-tarmac that and stuff and gets frost next year, it's going to raise that tarmac up again. So if we put cement there, the proper cement and the quartering and stuff like that, it wouldn't raise that. So we can open up the door, but it's an emergency door anyhow, so.
There's money in the budget and miscellaneous sidewalks for that.
Tribute up in there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and then I talked to the lady tonight up to 13, 13 Prospect Street where Dave Bogard had his garage. And it's NCGD Hockey. And they do Zumba up there, they do dance up there, they do hockey training and stuff. And just to let people know that he just started his business in October. And with the COVID and stuff like that, now he's, he's starting to open up and he's starting to get people in there and stuff like that, just to let everybody know.
Where's this?
Just coming into the village on Chapman Street.
The last building before the golf course.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where that is.
Yeah. So, and he said that it'd be nice of the village to, it was nice of the village to come up and talk to him and stuff and heard. That's all I have.
Uh, trustee Arnott, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment on Mr. Wayman's comments about the ERS meeting. I agree, it was very tense. It was very intense. And I agree that the board has issues and we need to be more professional. And I believe my, I said myself for one, will be more professional from now on. And, but I do believe that we got, we connected, I think, with ERS. And I think we got on the same page as what we, what we're looking for is basically jobs for the village. And I think we opened up a good dialogue with them. They've already reached out and invited myself and trustee Falke to another meeting to discuss some of their plans that they have. So I believe that we have work to do. But I believe as long as we have an open dialogue with them and we talk to each other and respect each other, I think we can move forward. And I hope we have a good relationship with ERS all through the development process. And that's all I have for this.
Uh, trustee Falke?
Yes, I brought up that's the last meeting about the moratorium, about electric boilers. Right, and at that meeting, I mentioned that I would look into it. And I did call, I called NICOM just to see if they had any kind of like documentations or samples of local laws, I kind of dealt with that. I spoke to a gentleman named Wade Beltramo at NICOM. He was going to investigate that and get back to me. We also talked about then being extending the moratorium. Right. And, and if we talk about how to do that, I think at some point.
Right.
And, and I confirmed with Wade that my thoughts was in order to extend that, we have to pass like a local law to do that. He agreed. So I've already started the process of preparing like, I think we just, we talked about doing rather than a year, we had a six-month moratorium to keep it reasonable. Because that's kind of the criteria looking at moratoriums is make sure they're reasonable in scope. And I know we had a prior moratorium, I think a year.
15 months.
Okay, we respected that. So I think a six-month one is reasonable. So I'm already in the process of drafting that, it's in the works. I did not hear back from Wade. Wade was going to check into the, whatever he may have on electric boilers. I explained to him what our issues were with them and, and he was supposed to get back to me, he does not. So I will check in with him this week again and see if he's found anything. And if not, then, then I'm going to take a crack at it. We have some discussions about the actual local law. But they would need to probably, maybe on the next agenda or whatever, get more, get that local, get a local on the agenda for the extended moratorium like for six months.
Another person that we could probably contact is Tony Madafi, who's in the municipal electric.
Okay.
He has a lot of knowledge. I just want to explain to the people about why we do the electric moratorium on electric boilers. Electric boiler is usually retrofitted into a house that has hot water heat or fuel oil, where they take out the fuel oil furnaces and they put in these electric boilers. And with these electric boilers, they're not energy efficient. They draw a lot of energy at one time. So when we design all the lines throughout the village, they're, in the summertime, they're about quarter, quarter capacity. In the wintertime, in the heating months, we're about three quarters capacity. So if everybody started putting in these electric boilers, it would take our lines and overload our system. So that's why we have a little concern about it. What there is, is most people have electric baseboard units with thermostats and separate rooms where everything doesn't run at one time. So that can be done. And also with the energy efficiency program that we have, they're really pushing these heat pumps, where the heat pumps give you air conditioner in the summer and heat in the winter. And right now there's rebates, there was a rebate last summer of $500 per unit. And now they're pushing them so much, they're willing to give you $1,000 per unit. So they're really promoting these heat pumps. So there is alternate sources of heat where we don't want to tell people that, oh, you can't, you know, you can't do the electric boiler, but that's the reason why. Because our system is, was made for the existing houses that were here. And like I said, in summertime, we're at quarter capacity. In wintertime, we could go up to three quarters. And you really don't, you know, it'd be expensive to dig up, add new lines, add larger transformers. And that's why we, we look into this electric moratorium. But there is alternate source to the heat, so.
I actually contacted my clients out of Repnepa as well, not IEP as well, to make sure that we wouldn't be accidentally banning something they actually really had rebates for. And there are no rebates for these hot air furnaces and hot water electric furnaces.
There's such a high energy use when they come on, they come on at one time and they're trying to heat the whole house up with one source of electricity. And it's not like I said, where you have thermostats and separate rooms that come on and they cycle out.
As everyone gets old.
Yeah.
Because our systems were built for a low but steady load and now a high peak.
Right. And when you get to high peaks, it, it, it tax out the electric lines and also it puts us on a higher demand. So our bills will also figure into the equation of how they figure out how much to charge us each month for our electric rates. But I know there would be like a, probably a public hearing or people would have questions. But I'd just like to put it out there, the reason why we bring it up. And this is why we investigate and bring it up. We're trying to protect our interests with the village.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will get you that draft of a local law for the extension of the moratorium. And I'll get back to Mr. Beltramo at NICOM to talk about. If you want to give me that gentleman's phone number, Brian, because I don't have that. If you could just, you know, call me or email me with it, that'd be great. I'll reach out to him as well.
Yeah.
But I'll reach out to Wade anyways, I've got his number.
Okay, perfect.
I can actually get you Tony's number at the end of the meeting because it's in my laptop back there which is streaming the meeting. But I can't pull up right now, but anyway.
Yeah, that's fine.
He's the director of the municipal electric. He represents all of, all the municipalities as executive director. So he has a lot of good information and how to do it and where to go.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, other reports. Joe Cooper's, wait.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Joe Cooper?
The only thing I have to tell you, I think we're going to a very slow year as far as, well, building and development, pricing on materials. Material apparently is up over 100% from previous years. I mean, a $2, $2.2 by four is now $7 or something.
Wow.
So I think it's going to be a bit of a slow year. I hope we do well, but, but time will tell, I guess.
Tom? Yeah, I basically was making a comment on the moratorium because I think Brian brought that up in his, in his portion. I would ask for two different executive sessions. One with respect to post-acquisition of property. And then the second one dealing with, you know, personnel.
I'll make a motion for both of those.
Second. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Matt carries. Administrator Susan, do you have anything else today?
Yes, in our budget, there's $150 for the clerk for working on the annual budget. And I would like to ask for someone to make a motion to move that to Amy Lemieux, who is our senior typist, who actually did the lion's share of any work on the budget with our Sen.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
Second. And trustee Arnott seconds. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I would also like to just remind you all that we do have another special board meeting coming up on the 17th, the day after the election at 4:00 PM.
Is that here?
Yes. Also, as you heard in the resolution, the parks grant is done and has been closed out. We got the last of our money. And also the sewer engineering grant has been closed out. And we got the last of our money on that too. And that's it.
And opening the meeting back to the public. A brief adjournment.
Before we do that, I got a phone call from Ryland Duffy. And he wanted to talk to me about the historian or something to do. I guess he's going to college for, be a historian or whatever, something. So anyhow, I texted him back and said that he could take and call me anytime and I'd talk to him and stuff and see what he has to offer or whatever, so.
I think he wanted to do an internship?
Yeah, well, we don't have no money, so it has to be free if they were doing that, so.
We don't have a historian for him to work with unless, no.
Let's work with you.
You're the closest person I have to historian.
Yeah, well, we had six emails today and stuff like that. And Brandon Mercini was down there and he, he's doing, because he's got his code in the, into the computer and stuff. I don't have my code in there and stuff like that, so. He did some of the emails and stuff and we looked up some people that they were looking for and we got our attention squared away and we sent them back the emails and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I have, so.
Would, his name's Brendan, right?
Yes.
Would, would he be good for the next historian, for me to restore that position or?
No, he don't want to do that.
He doesn't want to do it? Okay.
I asked three or four other people and stuff and they're, they don't have the time and stuff. Well, like I said, we're, we got six emails today and at least we're, at least getting some progress back and all and stuff, so.
Yeah. It's nice that Brandon's helping out.
Yeah.
I think he does it through the legacy of his mother.
Yeah.
His heart is in the right place.
Yeah.
I make a motion for recess.
Second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
Is your battery's low yet? I'm not surprised, but it's not dead yet, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Stop. Thank you for coming back. See you, John. Stop.
Wait for me, John.